We are back in work session and our next item up is the curfew legislation. I have Barbara Duncan, but I think we have Colonel Longchamp. Did I get that right Colonel's right? First I was promoting you, then I was demoting you.
What happened to Lieutenant Colonel? He wasn't in there at all, just went right from major to Colonel.
Afternoon again.
Afternoon. Welcome back. Let you take the floor.
All right, I was talking to Mr. Tillman earlier and Tillman for the chief. I wasn't quite sure exactly where to start with this. I've got some statistics and I know that this thing is still, it's about a half-cooked cake, I guess at this point is the best way to approach it. But anyway, let me start by saying that the chief asked me to, basically the gist of this would be that the community, there's several communities, Princeton being one of them, the West End, Silver Avenue area that really brought this actually to the chief to kind of introduce this. And so that's really why the police department, that's why we're here bringing this forward now, is that this was actually a public request or citizen's request to do this. So there has been some research that's done. I know the chief's been working with Mr. Tillman on it. And what I have noticed just going through the chief's paperwork, trying to make myself smart on this, is that we had some statistics that were pulled by our crime analyst just to go through some of the numbers in there. And just looking at the times and some of the stats on juvenile offenses and if you'd like to hear some of these numbers, in 2014, numbers, there were 317 juvenile arrests made by the Silver Police Department. And what's interesting-
Could you say that number again, please?
Three hundred and seventeen.
Thank you.
And the interesting thing that we were looking at on this is the times of the day. So this would get into, if we're looking at creating a ordinance that would, I guess the best way to put it is curb the times that any juveniles that were causing problems to be out unsupervised on the street. Was between four and six PM, of course that coincides really with the time of day that the kids at school, you know, lets out. So four to six PM, it's about nineteen percent, accounted for about nineteen percent of the calls or arrests rather, nineteen percent of the arrests. And then from eight to ten PM was about, was thirteen percent. And then from ten PM to seven AM was twenty-one percent. And of course, the later in the day, the more violent offenses that we saw as far as the assaults with weapons, aggravated assaults. Usually the earlier calls were mainly just other than skirmishes between the kids getting out of school. It was mainly nuisance type offenses, thefts, malicious destruction of property and so forth. So when we're considering the ordinance, you know, I think the times would certainly be a major factor. And then looking through some literature, I know that the Baltimore City ordinance, their current ordinance was used as a template. A lot heavily on that information to look at what Baltimore City was doing and the times. One of the main things was, they also noticed in there was they would really encourage you to narrow your criteria as far as what exactly you're restricting, be very specific. Because there are some agencies throughout the country that have had their ordinances challenged and overturned based on just being a little too loose, just a little too vague on exactly what authority that they're giving the law enforcement to take. So we want to be very specific and narrowed in those endeavors. Actually, it took a lot of this information out of, it's called the Model Curfew Ordinance for local jurisdictions. And this is actually an older document, but it was very interesting. It was from the Cabinet Council on Criminal Justice, Juvenile Justice. So I'm looking at that and then I can pass these stats around for the cabinet if anyone would like to look at those.
Is that the federal booklet or-
This is state.
State, Maryland?
Yes.
Okay. We pulled stuff from all over, so I wasn't sure where it was coming from.
Yeah, it was very, very interesting.
So what it boiled down to, the ten PM to seven AM, we don't know exactly what the arrests or the charges were, but a little more than one per week for all of 2014 in that timeframe.
Can you get us a copy of this?
I certainly can.
Yeah.
I certainly can. It's also, the actual charges and the offenses are listed right below.
Right, but doesn't, oh, okay, for, these were for the seven to ten.
Now, do these also reflect calls for service? I mean, when you get there?
No, these are just arrests. So I'd have to, I didn't notice the data, it wasn't pulled or it wasn't in the folder for, took calls for service of violent juveniles. That, we have to be a little careful because as far as how that's captured. So if we, I don't want to tell you I can prove something, that may not be able to prove, if it's a call for service where there's no report taken, I'd have to look and see how that's captured in our system to be able to determine whether it was an adult or whether it was a juvenile.
Right, and if it was a domestic violence or some other case and there was a juvenile present, would they be captured as the juvenile involved?
Right, exactly. So that information, I'd have to talk to our crime analyst to see how they can pull that.
A ballpark figure would be appropriate, I think, for us.
Sure. Just looking through this also, there's, I think you copied this also, but there was, I believe if my calculation was right, I think there was, we can't remember. Thirty-nine municipalities in the state that actually have and enforce curfew laws that they have, curfew ordinances that they have in place.
Have they produced any statistics or have you gotten anything as to reduction in crime or impact?
There was, at Baltimore City, there was some information, some feedback that we got that, and the simple question was, do we think it was, do they think it was effective? Has it been effective? And the answer we have is that it depends on who you ask. Depends on who you ask, but overall, the police department, a statistic, or not statistics, but the information we got is that they, over time, they did see a reduction in juvenile violence, juvenile offenses. Of course, the difference, I think, or one of the things considered with, of course, the city, the size of Baltimore is that there's also an awful lot of other facilities, other players. And the report that I handed you there from the, I'm not sure if you've got it now from the state, is that it can't be, yes, it can't be just, it's really a holistic approach to the problem. It can't just, it's not really just the police matter, it's not just stuff, because we won't be able to do it alone. It's because you have to have the churches, faith groups, community, community groups, schools, so forth and so on. Because particularly in Salisbury, because, or the police department, rather, is that simply, we would have to really take a hard look at how we would deal with the juveniles as far as if we, say for instance, could you get a hold of the parents, say we had habitual offender, we can't get a hold of the parents, what do we now do with this juvenile?
Right.
We don't necessarily have the facilities in-house to house the juvenile longer term. We would certainly have to, in certain cases, have to contract out or make some agreement with other facilities and so forth, anywhere from food to basic needs and that kind of thing. So, and to think that that's probably not going to happen, you know, I'm sure it will in a lot of these type of issues.
Well, that was one of my concerns about this, was what you do with them if no one picks them up. And one of the options was you simply release them. Well, where is this going to be? Is that going to be in proximity to somewhere where they can cause, if they've called everybody and no one's come to pick them up, how are they going to get home? How are they going to get to school? What's going to happen to them?
The problem with, once we take custody of them, there are responsibilities at that point and we're responsible for the safe release of them also. So we'd have to release them to a parent guardian, someone, you know, responsible or the city puts the city in a situation where they could be liable for any injury or anything that happens.
So then they're going to social services was another one of the options.
Relative, relative.
It's just trying to be-
Would it be never armed?
Yeah, we do certainly work, you know, that would certainly have to, have to work out.
Yeah, it's pretty specific, it's pretty narrow about, that's another thing we'd have to consider is how narrow we want to make that about who's responsible that can come and get them. It's got adult brother, a parent, a brother, sister, aunt, uncle, grandparent to come and take charge of the minor. Well, yeah, there may be a cousin, there may be, I think that's kind of limiting.
Well, the school system already has this in place. Does it not?
Curfew?
No, not curfew, put a call in the case of some emergency or another.
Yes, but that's, I'm not sure with FERPA rules if they could even share that information with us, one thing. And we're assuming that they've tried all those calls and no one came. Certainly if someone's sitting in a youth connection center, they want to get out of there, they're going to call anybody and everybody they can. But another concern that I had about this was the onus that's put on businesses. We have several different layers here of ages and times and the times change in the summer. We have under fourteen, fourteen to seventeen, over seventeen doesn't apply. I think about the 7-Eleven next to Y High and they're not supposed, they're subject to a misdemeanor fine if they have juveniles in there when they should be at school. They have lots of flexible schedules at the high school. How are they to know if someone is, somebody who gets out at noon or doesn't go in until two or until noon? How do they judge that? What I see happening is they say nobody under eighteen without a parent. And then they can't get service at any store in town because they're afraid that they're going to get charged with a misdemeanor.
I think already, some stores already have, like during the school, especially at High's Market, they already have no more than two students or three students in the store at one time because of the problems they were having.
Right.
And I don't think that, I agree with what you're saying about the timeframe, especially around the high school, where some kids now just go have the day, nine o'clock in the morning or something. But see, one of the problems, they did away with joint officers years ago, kids not going to school. Because a lot of times I see kids in McDonald's, because you know I'm there, and I always ask, how come you're not in school? You know, that's the first thing I, either they have a doctor's appointment or they're with their mother doctor's appointment, or they've been suspended. And this is what I think we should encourage, especially the educational system, if you suspend a child for one day, you should have in-school suspension. I do think they do have it, they do have it, but they need to do more of it. If the child's one or two days, it should be find something for them, even in the library or somewhere where they can be sitting doing work and not roaming the streets. Sometimes the kids are suspended and parents may not even know it.
Years ago, we had a, we actually had a policy dealing with truancy where our officers would pick up or question, let's say, we'd say we'd find a juvenile at a convenience store or just walk in the street. And we would stop them and question them and a lot of times what we found was they were suspended from school. And on several occasions that way, myself was, what we found was the parent wasn't aware that they, the one, the child was suspended.
That's right.
When we went to take them home or try to make contact with the parent, quite often we couldn't, couldn't make, couldn't make contact with the parent until later on in the evening or something like that. And we, of course, our next result, locating other family members to call the school. School would say, well, so-and-so was suspended. And we would really have to work with the guidance counselor there, remember, to have them accept a child back at least, you know, even if for lack of a way to clarify, it is sort of an in-school suspension like you were talking about. And we were really kind of stuck if school didn't, wasn't willing to take them back. Luckily, they always did. We were, you know, we just really didn't have another, you know.
We'll give the council, the members that are here, when we talk about Delaware Avenue and Booth Street, we had several young people under sixteen, I think, that were actually robbing people's homes during the day. Then you had the instance where they beat the old man, eighty-two old man in the Camden area. And then-
It was on a weekend, though, I think.
They would ride bicycles and I think that the time the guys were found, that they started from Pemberton Apartments and went over all the way from the drive side and a couple of bicycles were stolen. See, that's what caused us a concern because one man's home had been invaded twice and he was saying he was going to shoot one and he's not going to ask the age to afterwards because they were blatantly robbing these people and these were juveniles. And that's why we started meeting to try to prevent someone from getting injured. And I think what we're trying to do is build a relationship with the children and the parents and the law enforcement.
Yeah, I think, I think that one of the things really probably focusing on my mind is to try to build a relationship with the parents.
Yes.
To, to give them another, to work with them, you know what I mean? So if we can't get the parents involved and onboard, we'll never be able to make this thing work. It's just trying to develop a trust, trust relationship with the parents that are involved, that's what.
That's the, that's the objective of these meetings, is supposed to be the objective of these meetings. And also, I think that the parents should have a responsibility of keeping, especially these young kids, not eight, nine, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, kids should be in the house or near their apartment complex or somewhere, not roaming, walking all over Fitzwater Street or Waverly Drive, wherever. They're supposed to be on, they should be home doing homework or something, looking at TV or playing video games. Because anything can happen to your child, just to protect your child, you know? Not necessarily saying your child's going to do something wrong, it's just to protect kids nowadays, because people are so mean.
Well, the, the one group that we had a major issue with, I think still do, that was responsible for that assault of the elderly gentleman, that was broad daylight on a weekend, as I recall. And-
Subtle, I'm a bit different.
Already.
So, I mean, that's, nothing in this curfew ordinance or is going to, that we have here is going to help with that. I mean, if they're out there broad daylight, blatantly thumbing their nose at the law, they're going to turn up again and again.
Well, I think, you know, there's a fine line between, you know, if we get an ordinance passed that pertains to curfew is defining, defining the middle ground between approaching the juvenile because we legitimately think that they're, they're within that age group. And so it gives the police a, an avenue to approach them. Where, when you don't have, have anything, you really, the officers really, without some sort of reasonable suspicion, shouldn't be approaching, you know, unless we have some sort of reasonable suspicion, whether that be through false for service crime data or something else, you know, like that. But this certainly gives another reason to, and particularly in these other areas, some of these areas where problems, to approach the juveniles, if they have nothing else but to say, hey, aren't you, you know, you know about the curfew, aren't you under this age, you know? Because that in itself is a violation. Then again, like you said, just simply doing that, even if we give the kid a warning or citation, it doesn't mean a whole lot, you know, if they're out there committing crimes anyway, obviously it's not effective. But if we can get the parents, you know, for some of the folks that maybe, you know, you're always, I think, going to get a certain element that are going to be causing problems. It doesn't really matter what, you know, ordinance is passed, but you might have a large, you know, large impact on a lot of the folks that, you know, that perhaps wouldn't necessarily be involved in activities that might draw the police attention otherwise.
That's true. I think, this is a biggie, I think that what we need is community input. You brought the ordinance here, I think even some information could go out through the school system, if you meet with Dr. Ferguson, to let the parents know that this is being considered. Also, you got the apartment complexes, they have to go in and pay their rent, like Riverside Pemberton, those kind of complexes in the switches in the city. Let them know what's proposed and so the people have a copy of what is being proposed curfew. You don't have to do, give them all this detail, but probably you would like to hear a feedback and if you want to have a hearing or whatever, let them know where the hearing is going to be and centralize maybe the hearing in different parts of the city and get community, make community aware what we may be considering. And, go ahead.
I'd like to see more of the statistics about the effectiveness in places where it has been done, Baltimore for instance. But other jurisdictions that are maybe more similar to our size and demographic, be very interested to hear that. We also have one person sign up for public comment, Theo Williams, if you want to come up and- Yeah, I think so.
I know that just some, while we're waiting, just some additional information at Baltimore that advised was that, what they noticed was it did limit the number of youths walking around, you know, just kind of milling around, ordering at night and during nighttime hours and did minimize the number of juveniles involved in the night time. So they didn't see dramatic, try to get some statistics.
Six DMI.
Yeah, exactly. Over what period of time they can get, you know, I'm not sure when the ordinance was passed, but.
That would be great, thank you.
Honestly, we're just talking about the truancy, or the truancy, when we, years ago, we did, we also had a sign-up sheet where the parents could, could sign, could, we'd advertise that and parents could actually request, you know, that if you see my child out, you know what I'm saying? It was supposed to be in school. If we saw a child that was, that we thought was supposed to be in school, then we would, we had the parents' permission to take actions.
That's good.
Parents wanted to be involved.
And for the parents, it's proposed as a misdemeanor on the second violation? No, first violation. Five hundred dollar fine and community service.
I think the, talking, talking to Chief Duncan, because I did notice that also, I looked at that and I was like, you know, what, what happens with the parents or the guardian or whatever, that, you know, can't afford five dollars, a little under five hundred dollars and they're already having trouble with the juvenile.
Sticking out the window or-
They're looking for help more so than anything, isn't it? And there is a section in there that pertains to working out a, it really, honestly, it's more or less trying to, it's not really an emphasis on the fine, particularly a monetary fine unless, of course, it's habitual, but try to work it out through counseling or work it out through parenting skills and so forth, rather than the fine unless it becomes habitual and then they're just not, you know, taking any other advice or help.
And then you have parents that's working and maybe not, maybe for childcare and kids when they get out of school instead of going home, doing the homework.
Latchkey kids.
Yeah, and that's why I keep talking about the after-school programs with kids like that and they don't have enough around.
The parent that agrees to family counseling, but the kids won't go, the child won't go. I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
No, you're fine. Actually, you addressed a lot of the concerns that I was going to raise already, especially the last one. So this emerged out of last Saturday at the Soulzro Archimica Youth Civics Council. This issue emerged because of some news thing, I don't know, it's in the news already. And so we started talking about it and there were a number of concerns and I wanted to raise, I mean, I will leave the concerns that the youth council is specifically addressed to them. They were concerned about the times in, in looking at it. And I think as an exercise, I might have them come and speak to you guys if that's okay.
Who was it again?
The, the thing I run, the Soulzro Archimica Youth Civics Council.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. But my, my main concern was actually what you just raised in terms of the, the fine itself, because I think a lot of these issues have already been raised that as it was originally proposed in Baltimore, it is a different socioeconomic and geographic entity. And in a municipality where we have a household median income of thirty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred dollars is, in my opinion, overly burdenous. And as it's proposed right now, it does not clearly state at what point that fine is triggered. It just only says, a parent who violates the above-mentioned section of the subtitle, after having received notice under enforcement of a prior violation or having been issued a municipal infraction of a notice under paragraph one of the subsection for a prior violation, yada, 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 and on conviction is subject to one or more of the following at the discretion of the court. So it, I mean, it largely is at the discretion of the court if this is to occur after the second violation, third, fourth, fifth, sixth. So just to put this in perspective, if you look at areas outside of the corporate limits, like the Nitsdale area, where median household incomes are upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, if you did that as a percentage, you'd be looking at fines of about thirteen hundred dollars as a percentage of area median household income. So I don't know if we always, I mean, we as the community understand the differential in area household median income. If you, and this is why I wanted to show, if you look at the areas that this was brought to our attention, the Princeton Street Homes area and the Delaware and Booth Street areas, the poverty rates are, you know, in the upwards of forty percent, which I'm sure we already know. And monthly rents are in the area of six to seven hundred dollars. So, you know, a fine of this magnitude is onerous. And then the last concern that was raised is, and I don't, this is within the, this is not within the confines of the ordinance itself, but the issue of who gets stopped, if you will, I mean, like I, we all kind of talked about, and I know that I'm, I was under the age of seventeen and I was at Taco Bell after eleven o'clock at night on many days. And am I necessarily going to get stopped versus the kid walking down the street in another part of town? So those, and like I said, you addressed a lot of these concerns already. And I think the steps being taken right now to have more community input, more community involvement and making sure that this legislation is not taken near verbatim from that, which was instituted in Baltimore. And if you actually look at the Baltimore legislation, the original legislation before it was changed by Baltimore City Council is something that, you know, according to the youth council, in my own opinion, is a bit more appropriate, as in the hours. So under the Baltimore legislation, line sixteen, it was originally set to be, or actually, sorry, that's a long, long line. I apologize. Oh, they, they number it differently in Baltimore than we do. Anyway, the, wherever it is, it was originally meant to be the evening legislation between four PM and twelve PM, or twelve AM. And that was originally, and then that was struck down to eleven and that's the one that we mirrored. And if you look at the fine, it was originally set at five hundred, but they changed it to three hundred. So at least if I'm reading the Baltimore legislation correctly. So just some things to consider and figure work session's a place to consider it. So anyway, thank you for your time listening to me, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
Want to add to Mr. Williams' comments about the fines is that the fines are, may be planted by community service, not necessarily fines.
Yeah, it's, but that's at the discretion of the court.
Indeed.
It's either or.
Well, I would hope one's, one's economic status would be taken into consideration when levying a fine as opposed to, you know, giving the, the community service.
Also, I think-
Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not. I think also what should be stressed is the responsibility that parents have for their children. And that's, but we have to do something because summer's coming, warm weather's coming and it's not, it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse if we lose control of the parents, of the children, because some of these parents cannot control their children. And for whatever reason, when you go in McDonald's, see the kids kicking their parents and, yeah, I talk loud now. You see children just downright disrespecting their parents, saying, I hate you and things, making comments like that, what kind of control does that parent have on that little kid? Little kid could be six years old saying it to his mother. So I think the role that, that the community has is to help these parents that need help. help these parents that need help, that cry for help before their children get into trouble. Some of these kids are already in trouble. And some of these parents are probably ask the services, can you help me with my child? And what the child has to do is commit a crime before they can get help.
Exactly.
And that's what happens to a lot of, because a lot of these kids. But however, we still have to find a way that people who want peace and feel safe in their homes, we have to do something for them also. So I think, um, a curfew of some kind, whether it's this extreme or whatever, should be put into place. Or before we do this, cause this is just the first time we talked about it, we need to get, again, community input before we do anything. We have to do that, um, cause we have to feel, feel how these parents, and some parents will come out and, and speak on this, on, on this behalf. Um, some parents, people, they vote, voice their opinion against it. So we need to hear the community, um, output, I think before we even go any further, to see, and some young people. And they need, maybe they need to hear why we're doing this, you know? To see, you know, cause some young people have their opinions if they want to go to Skate Land. They want to go to the movie, cause some movies they go to ten o'clock. They, I think some movies start ten o'clock and eleven. So, um, and they may be going with their friends, they may be innocent. But see the incident in the mall. See that, that really was something, people, now, older people don't wanna go to the mall because of maybe the incidents that, that happened in, in the mall. One fight started and another fight started and escalated. So unfortunately, the actions of some is gonna affect others that's gonna do right. So I think the first thing I'd like to see is he, get, um, things set up around the community about, um, curfews.
I agree. I think that's a great next step. The chief's already begun having meetings. I don't know specifically about this, but, but it may be something that can be incorporated into that. Um, or counsel with our sessions that we're doing as well. Because we do need feedback on this. There's, there's a lot of ground covered in this. And you mentioned not being able to get services until they have a criminal record. Well, even with this, it specifically says that it's not a criminal offense for them, yet for the parents, it's a misdemeanor. So we can get the parents help then after that, but no, it's still not the children necessarily. Um, so there, I think that it's a good start, but I, I think there's a long way to go and a lot more information that I need before I can get behind this personally. I, I think we need to do everything that we can. I'm just not sure that this is the answer.
But I think we have all, three of us that are sitting here and the fourth and the fifth, probably two, that we have a level of commitment here that we wanna do something about the problem. We have acknowledged that there is a problem and that we, we want a course of action rather than, oh my gosh, what are we gonna do?
Right, instead of just throwing things at it.
There you go.
Find the right thing.
So we have, you know, this is, this is one direction and I think this is, it's, it's worked elsewhere. Um, I, I have to say this, but I remember, do you all remember, it's ten o'clock. Do you know where your children are?
That's right, that's right.
And I, I know.
Yes, right.
I think all of us remember that.
Yes, I do.
I think that, that getting input from the community is, is totally appropriate. And, but I want the public to know that we're gonna go in some direction. So don't be thinking we're gonna just slough it off and not do a thing. Right, okay, yeah.
Mr. Williams.
Um, sorry, I forgot two things. They're really quick. Um, the, when we have the public meeting, I'll have the youth counselors actually come out just because school's ending. They can't really come right now. Um, but two quick things. First of all, they, they're completely in support of the daytime regulations. I don't think there's really any, um, concern about that. And then also it says in the very beginning that this does not apply to anyone um, who is with someone that's twenty one years of age and older. Um, is that supposed to be just blood relative or anyone that's twenty one years in age and older? So if that's being the case to the statistics that Colonel Minechine presented, how many of those juvenile arrests were with only juveniles or with individuals who are twenty one years of age and older? Um, that, that's, obviously, we didn't know those statistics at the time, but, but the twenty one years of age and older was something that we discussed, but that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes that might be worse influence than being by themselves. So, yeah, and as I read it, it was just twenty one and older, um, responsible adult. Then who determines whether they're responsible? That's a whole nother ball of wax, but thank you for bringing this. Um, I think it's pretty clear that we're looking for more information and more input from the community, from police department, from the youth in our community.
School, I think the school system should definitely be in on these community meetings, especially during daytime hours, during school hours when you put these kids out of school. They need to find a place, uh, for these children.
I think we're doing less and less of that if, if I'm not mistaken. More in-school suspension. I think that was state mandated this year.
I hope so.
Oh, the other thing that, um, I wanted to bring up was it talked about various ages. And, um, I know that the age where they can drop out of school has now moved to seventeen and will soon move to eighteen. And now we are looking at this as, uh, up to age seventeen. We're getting a lot of tiers in here of, of what we consider a minor or the age of majority. We've got a seventeen here and eighteen for smoking or, you know, various things and twenty one for drinking and, um, if we're, if we're going to look at this as minors, I think eighteen is, is the age. Eighteen's a minor. Um, they're still gonna be required to be in school until they're eighteen and, um, without jumping through a lot of hoops to get out. I, I just think that setting yet another level is going to be even further confusing for people who are trying to determine whether they should or shouldn't be out or be allowed to be in their business, whether it's Taco Bell or Seven Eleven. Plus at seventeen, you may remain, well, you should probably have a driver's license or a permit or something, but, um, you can, you can get one, right? Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else have any?
When we were talking about the eighteen year olds, I'm, what, what exactly were you saying? I'm not sure.
Um, it says that the maximum age on here that's covered by this curfew is seventeen.
Okay, okay.
But they could still be required to be in school until eighteen, as I believe it's next year. So why stop at seventeen?
Well, we'd have to. I think, you know, when we look at eighteen, then we have to look at the end of the school year as well. Cause at that point, they graduated and they're free agents.
It changes for the summer hours and it, and it has provisions in there for going to and from school and social events and, and church and that kinda thing. So, um, I just didn't know why we settled on seventeen versus eighteen. Maybe that's where we need to be, but I, I need, I'd like some more input on that. All right. So we'll see that back again at some point and see some community meetings around that. Next item was, uh, again with Colonel Minechine, surplus funds for replacement radio batteries. Give you a minute to switch gears.
Basically, the radio batteries, in the past, um, several months, we have been getting complaints from our patrol officers that the radio batteries in their portable units, the ones they actually, you know, the walk-in radios, uh, radios have been failing. Um, and what I mean by that, they're not making it through the twelve hour shift and a lot of these guys are working. Particularly get a late arrest, you know, um, there's not time to charge your battery while you're, while you're working. So, and I contacted the manufacturer of our radios, Motorola and, uh, Corstees. Most of these batteries are in the neighborhood about four years old now, so, um, talking to them, they're, they're of course not, no longer covered under warranty at four years old. And they, uh, this is at a point that would be considered reasonable, but a failure would, could possibly start happening in work. We're experiencing a, uh, an increasing number of failures, um, with these, um, batteries and the, the, although expensive, the reasonable solution would be just to replace the radio ba, the radios are fine, but the batteries just need to be replaced. And we were gonna actually keep the old ones as a spare so they could still charge them. And they're still making it through. Some of them haven't failed yet. So as these radio batteries, we were actually looking at just issuing the officers a second radio battery. So they'd have one charged and then one on standby. So I think that might solve the problem.
Do they have a charging mechanism in their vehicle?
Uh, we, we, some of the cars do, some of the cars don't. We did cross that bridge, uh, and a lot of that has to do with the cost and are the vehicles getting ready to rotate out kinda things.
Right, space.
Space is a big thing right now.
So you're really saying that they leave, leave the house with one in the, one in the radio and one in the pocket?
In one in the pocket or, or they could bring the other one in. And we have, um, we have portable charging chargers at headquarters. They could just, uh, with their ID number, of course. With their ID number, of course, on the radio battery and, uh, they could just, you know, have the radio there for them as a secondary.
Okay. And you, you're looking for a hundred and two batteries, so that's a full complement.
That's the full complement.
Of radios that you have. And it's coming from surplus, general fund surplus, not from speed camera monies or?
Uh, this is coming from, uh, general fund surplus.
Okay. Any questions?
Where do you dispose of your batteries once they're actually dead, dead?
Usually we, uh, we've, we've never actually, usually when we've gotten in the past, we've gotten rid of them. They have been, um, they have been, they've gone with the radio. This, this, the old radios we had, we just radio batteries and everything went with them. And they're generally recycled by Motorola, in this case by Motorola. Um, so I will have to call Motorola and determine whether there is a recycle. If there isn't, we'd recycle them or, or it might be. But our plan right now is to, since, when I say failing, they're, they're still, they're just not making it through that, that duration, that twelve hour, fourteen hour period. So they're still functional, uh, right now. So we'll have to see, once it gets to a point where they're just not gonna charge at all, then we'll look at recycling, if that's a possibility, contact the manufacturer.
Okay. Everybody okay with moving this forward to legislative session?
Please, yeah.
Okay. Surplus funds for fire retardant gear. Colonel Minechine again?
What's fire retardant?
Going in the house of fire.
Okay. Well, I don't have my folder on that, but I'm, I think I got, I think it's back there, but I got it. Uh, I think this, this, no, I think this ordinance, I think it was for fire retardant, uh, gear for tactical units, SWAT team. And this is part of their, um, their, um, training to, and there have been occasions statewide where tactical units have had to, had, had issues that happened where there was, um, danger of, of fire or something like that. And these, uh, these suits are actually, uh, they're actually flight suits. They're actually pilot suits. Um, there are agencies in this region that, that, that actually use these suits as part of their, um, symbol to, in certain situations. Uh, this is actually part of the ordinance, um, so this would protect them from, from that type of environment they have to employ. That type of environment and then I think the other part of that ordinance was for optics, for, um, for weapons, for tactical weapons. And, uh, these are new optics. These are weapons that have the optics and for, um,
Illumination and storage.
I'm sorry.
Said illumination and storage. Weapon optics, illumination and storage.
Yeah, the, the optics and.
And storage, okay.
Now, are these, and I probably should have asked this question with the last thing too, the batteries. Them, yes. Oh, him, okay. Um, for the batteries, being four years old, is this the first ra, round with these new batteries and these new radios? So we really didn't know when they were gonna start to?
We really didn't. What, the initial thing that, that I just, just remembered to mention was that the newer radios, we have, we have a radio right now that, um, when the city made the investment in these things, they, they were expensive. They're very good radios. They will carry us into the next radio system that the city purchases, which is coming down the pipe. Um, for the next twenty plus years, these radios should be good. But there's also more of a drain on the batteries that these, that these radios, the capability of these radios and the things they can do. There's more of a battery drain. We did not see this, um, issue with the older radios that we had that were more of a simple, simple functionality and there wasn't as, as much of an energy drain. Um, we, we did not, this is the first time that we've actually had this type of a problem with any of our radios. Um, but, um, certainly didn't anticipate it. But there is, that was one of the reasons the company was saying that these radios, and it is, you know, when you look at the capability of them, it does make sense that they're draining on the battery over the longer period of time. And to have any battery really, uh, push twelve, fourteen, fifteen hours, um, single use is, is, um, it's pretty, it's pretty good.
Right. Um, on the flame retardant protective gear, does, is that similar to the turnout gear for the fire department? Has a ten year shelf life?
I don't know.
And that we need to plan on that?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
Just thinking about getting it into the rotation of the regular budget and not having mid-year adjustments on things that we know are coming.
It's a good question. I don't think it falls under federal safety guidelines.
Well, if it's fire retardant.
I understand.
Probably got some kinda shelf life on it.
That's the question. I have a question about the batteries too. Are these going to be? You haven't decided yet on what the body camera models are going to be, but are these going to run from the batteries on the radio?
Uh, they are not.
Okay, they'll have an additional battery of their own?
Yes, they are not. I think we have narrowed that surge down to product. Has yet to be written up, but, um, talking to C I T and so forth, but, um, that was a concern. It was a concern of ours too, that it would be an additional drain. But, uh, I think moving forward, that there's gonna be a, a separate, um, a separate charging, a separate battery for that.
Yeah, my, my understanding was that the, even if the battery was brand new for the radio, drawing both on them, they wouldn't get through a shift.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was, aside from that, I was wondering if, uh, considering the age of the radios and that they're out of warranty now, is, uh, is there an aftermarket battery that's a better model than what Motorola actually provides?
There is a, um, there isn't an aftermarket battery that we've been able to find. We did research it and there is a large, there is a larger capacity battery that, that is made for this radio. The problem is it's larger and, uh, it would not fit. With that particular battery, battery attached, it would not fit into the holster that they have.
Of course not.
Naturally.
But we did, that was one of the first questions we asked, was there, was there a higher capacity battery that would work, you know? There is, but unfortunately.
All right, they can put sixty four gigs in a little thing like this, but they can't put battery capacity, you know? Normal size, but, okay. Um, any other questions about the flame retardant gear?
Have you had a, have you had a test run with these, with the flame retardant?
The, um, I, I can locate some. I'm sure there has been. These, this is actually military grade. Uh, these flight suits are actually military grade and, uh, I can see what I can locate.
Okay. It's my experience with some of the military grade stuff that's fire retardant. It gets really hot inside. I mean, really hot.
Yeah, I can, I can look into that.
Or is there something else that's maybe better through, along the lines of the fire, what the fire department uses? Anyway, um, I'm okay with, with this as a consensus.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think we've, we've used you up today.
Yeah. She picked a good day to, uh, be in school.
Yes, yes, don't forget your four. No, I was trying to reach it to.
Just get the copy Kathleen Kennedy did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. And last but not least, uh, Ms. Miller, request for declaration of parcel zero six four nine, College Avenue Water Tower, unused.
Are you familiar with where that's at?
No.
Um.
Pretty good idea.
It's behind the Mexican restaurant.
Or the Exxon?
Yeah, the Exxon.
Behind where?
Um, the Exxon down on thirteen, kind of across from the college. It was, um, narrow bendy, yes.
By, um, Super Fresh used to be?
Yes, right between there and thirteen.
Okay.
So there's an old water tower on that property. Um, the city really has no need for that, uh, property. Uh, it doesn't really have even any future use for any infrastructure needs. It's about a quarter of an acre. Um, my understanding is the city, I think, was approached by somebody that might be interested in that property. Uh, but the condition of sale would be that whoever would be interested would take down the water tower. Um, so really this was just to bring this to your attention. Um, if you're interested in moving it to a legislative session to either. to either declare the property surplus or unused, and then, um, to make a decision on how we want to possibly sell the property.
What's the difference between the designations of surplus and unused? And if it's unused, you still have to surplus it before you can sell it?
Um, I don't think that, I, I haven't looked into that, where, um, it talks about surplus. It talks about unused in the same paragraph, it, whether it's declared surplus or unused. It kind of uses both in the same, uh, exceptions or, or criteria for competitive bidding. So...
Another lovely, very clear, crystal clear part of our...
Could be unused.
So this, is it because of structural defects or structural considerations that it can't be used for another purpose in place? So if somebody bought the, bought the land with the water tower on it, they couldn't divert the water flow to?
Well, the, the tank that's there, the old tank was rendered not needed anymore when the new S U tank. Because the tank that's there is a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand gallon tank. S U is a two-million gallon tank.
Yes.
So it, and, and if you remember, I mentioned earlier, the S U tank actually sits at a higher hydraulic grade. So it does, if we tried to hook that into it, we'd have to use special valving, otherwise it would just overflow. So it's basically taken out of service. It's old. We actually had money programmed in the C I P for F Y eighteen, for a hundred thousand dollars, just to tear it down to make the property sellable as well as it becoming a future liability for the city in terms of being up. So we were approached by a, a realtor's on, I know, two occasions where there was some interest in the property, even to the extent that we got a call by a contractor, provided him the old nineteen thirty-four drawings we pulled out of our files for them to, I think, work up an estimate for a potential buyer for removing the tank. So, uh, it's, it would be something that would, uh, I think be a benefit. One, getting that, it would eventually could become an eyesore for us, uh, getting that tank out of there and then potentially bring that property into a taxable, usable base.
At this point, is the city disconnected from the tank itself?
It's completely disconnected from the system, yes.
So do we, do we have someone that's, I don't want to say on the hook, but on the line now that's looking for, looking to purchase it actively? Or are we just looking to surplus it so the next time they come circling, we can say, yeah?
I think the inquiry was an interest in it. I think this is the next step to sort of make it potentially available as surplus, so that if somebody typically, you know, realtors want to, want to move quick if they've got somebody on the hook. So this just may move, remove one of the obstacles or the time delay for somebody if they're indeed interested in the site.
Will we remove the chain link fence from around it, or is that going to go with the sale?
Um, that could be something that's negotiable. My main point that, when Jennifer and I talked, was to make sure that whoever did get the site had a responsibility and some kind of language in the sale, that the tank had to come down. Because they didn't want to see that somebody bought it and then the deal falls through and they own it now, this tank thing sits there.
Or they use it as an advertising gimmick and paint it and think it's just great that we can sit there until the bottom falls.
I always think of converting to an apartment, a cool apartment or something like that.
Wouldn't it be?
H G T V or something.
Definitely not eighty-eight accessible. Okay, so, well, I don't have any, I guess the one question I have is that, it says in here the estimate to remove the tank was fifty-one thousand, but you...
Well...
Is that because we got clarity, we got an actual estimate?
Yeah, we had, um, as I mentioned, we have a new company that we got under contract to do the maintenance on our tanks. And one of the things, when we got there, we kind of asked them what they thought it would be. It was programmed for about a hundred thousand in the, in the, uh, C I P, but that's something that was just a, a ballpark estimate when we got. So they's kind of entered fifty-one, but fifty-one thousand, but they didn't actually submit a bid or anything. It's just talk, so.
I think the traditional way of doing this has been to surplus the property and not, I'm not sure what the unused status is. Mr. Tillman, do you have any input on that?
I, I think, as it was described earlier, you, you are surplusing it when you make that determination. I, I think the, the use of the word "used" just implies that if it's something the city's utilizing, it probably shouldn't be surplus. I, I think it's all meant to mean the same thing legally.
But for clarity, I think it probably be...
I'll put it in there.
More useful to, to say we're surplus.
Yes, I, yes, I think that's what you should say. That's generally how it's referred to.
Speak our language, please.
Hey, that's in the charter too.
Yeah, I, I just think that for public interest sake, nobody comes around looking at this for another twenty years, and they look at it and say, well, it was declared unused, but does that mean that it's surplus? Do we have to do this again? Um, you know, we've had questions with some other properties, parking lots and things, whether they were surplus or not, because, for various reasons. So I just think for consistency's sake, at least what we've done since I've been on council will continue to be consistent and surplus. And I, I'm okay with that. Anybody else have any issues or?
I did want to ask one quick question though, Mark, and maybe this is for you. Um, with regards to how we offer this property for sale, would we be allowed to list it with a realtor? And would that meet the competitive bidding requirements?
Um, I don't think so is the answer, but I haven't read it for that purpose.
Could you double check? Um, there is, uh, actually one po- um, it's actually under, uh, non-competitive negotiations. If you could check that language and see if maybe that fits a little, it, it sounds like right off the bat it doesn't, but if you read the language there, uh, because my, my only hesitation is, our other option is, uh, a competitive sealed bid, which, you know, for, yeah, you, you know, you have to advertise it, and I, I'm not real sure that we would, it would really do the trick. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Very good. So I'll bring this to a legislative session then?
Yes.
Yes, it would be easier if someone else was marketing it.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's the last thing on our agenda. Does counsel have any comments?
On the resolution for PAC fourteen? You said something about the, um...
Yes, that should be forthcoming, um, resolution for PAC fourteen to eliminate the audit requirement. They just have one done in twenty-fourteen though, so it's not a huge rush. I think they're waiting.
I don't know where it's from. That's all I can tell on people doing that.
Yeah, we are, we are doing that. The, the, uh, sorry, are you aware of that whole conversation? Okay, yeah, because they don't, they fall well below the limits of the state requirements to have an audit. Uh, the county auditor, internal auditor, looked at it and said, it really shouldn't...
Four thousand dollars to get it done.
Right, four thousand dollars to get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, money they can use for other things.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, um, the recommendation was to go to a, uh, just a CPA's review rather than, as they do in the other three years, rather than to have a full-blown audit and reduce that cost. That'll be coming to us, that proposal will be coming to us soon.
Another issue. I spoke with, um, Mr. Maserello recently about coming to counsel to give an update on what, uh, the drug court is doing and what's going on with drug court and successes and failures. But a lot of people don't know what it's about, and, uh, it might be a good public opportunity to learn a bit of something and get an update for us. So what he wants to do is get a date, whether it be our next work session or a legislative session or whatever, but if we can give him a date sometime soon.
As addressing counsel or maybe as the community organization?
Well, I think addressing counsel would be appropriate.
So more of a work session. Local work session, Q and A.
There's not much in his, in his office that the community can get involved in on the good side.
Yeah, no, but some, some of it's just informational.
Well, this is, this, this would be totally informational and an opportunity to ask...
In order to get in the drug court, it couldn't be someone who has a drug problem or going to drug court that, you know, can be charged with something. And usually they wear a thing on their leg.
Many do.
Yeah, they usually wear one of those, what do you call them, monitors?
Yes.
Home monitor, yep.
Keeps them from going to jail.
All right, well, thank you all very much, and we're out of here at five o'clock.
Forty.